...of, uh, of Troy Hills, uh, June 21st, 2011. The time is, uh, 7:30. Item notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the official, in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 15th, 2010, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record and the Star Ledger and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 16th, 2010. A note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 2:00 PM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipani.net. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cicero.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Councilman Farrar.
Here.
Councilman Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Fox is absent. Also present are Ms. Lim, our business administrator, Mr. Iglesino, our township attorney, Ms. Keel, acting clerk, and Mayor Barberio. Would you all join me in a flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, upcoming meetings, July 12th, 2011, at 7:30 PM. An agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. July 19th, at 7:30 PM, regular meeting, public invited with public participation. Bids to be taken, July 6th, at 11:00 AM, reconstruction of curbs and sidewalks at various locations. On July 7th, at 11:00 AM, reconstruction of retaining wall east heading place in Mount Tabor. And now we have a presentation, Mayor Barberio and ADP.
First, I want to thank you, Mayor, and ADP for, on behalf of the township in Port Cipan, Detroit Hills, for your generosity to the township and our organization, so.
Good evening, members of town council. Thank you, Mayor Barberio, for having me here this evening. On behalf of automatic data processing, um, you know, I'm Assistant General Counsel in charge of real estate. I'm happy to be here tonight, and ADP likes to give back to the communities in which ADP has a strong presence, and Parcipani Township, Troy Hills being one of them, we try to make annual contributions to, uh, to the township. And on behalf of ADP, I actually have a handful of checks here, so let me, if you, if you don't mind holding this.
Sure.
I can read them off to you. There's a check in the amount of $2,000 made payable to Parcipani PBA, number 131, the Parcipani Police Department. $2,000 check made payable to the Parcipani Police Athletic League.
And then give it back?
Okay.
And then give it back?
You're welcome. A $2,000 check made payable to the Parcipani Troy Hills Public Library. Thank you very much. You're very welcome. A $2,000 check made payable to the Parcipani Troy Hills Fire Association. Another check for, in the amount of $2,000, made payable to the Parcipani Volunteer Ambulance Squad.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate it. You know, it's, it's companies like yourself that keep Pride and Parcipani alive and well, and I truly appreciate it for myself, the township, and the council as well, and the residents. Thank you very much.
Okay, now I'll make the assignments. Item one, Mr. Ferrera. Item two, Mr. Cicero.
Yep.
Item three, Mr. Stanton. Item four, Mr. Ferrero. Item five, Mr. Cicero. Item six, Mr. Stanton. Item seven, Mr. Ferrero. Item eight, Mr. Cicero.
Uh-huh.
Item nine, Mr. Stanton. And the consent agenda, Mr. Ferrero. And we have two add-ons. And so I'm up to, Mr. Cicero, you do the two add-ons. You don't have the second one.
That's the auction? It's one, right?
Yeah, that's one.
Doing the auction?
And then there's an add-on I will, I'll give to you now. This is to appoint, um, our interim clerk, Carol Keel.
Oh, okay.
Which we never formally did.
Okay.
That'll be the second add-on.
Okay, but that's for later.
That's when we do the add-ons.
Okay.
Okay, so introduction ordinance, number one, Mr. Ferrero.
Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced. Let me come through.
Yeah.
An ordinance of the township of Parcipani Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, amending powers and duties of the purchasing agent. Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on the first reading at the meeting of the township council of the township of Parcipani Troy Hills, held on June 21st, 2011. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at the meeting to be held on July 19th, 2011, at 7:30 PM. Prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons' interests shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be, be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introductions, thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrera, second by Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Uh, real quick, this, uh, this ordinance, we're just, we're just amending duties, that's all we're doing, right?
Not even really amending duties, what we're really doing is clarifying the, uh, bid threshold, uh, for contracts. That's really all. The statute, uh, provides for, uh, an increased, uh, threshold for municipalities with purchasing agents, and Parcipani obviously qualifies for that. It has been, uh, the practice of the township over the years to utilize the higher bid threshold, uh, amount anyway, uh, but we, we felt that the, uh, the language in the statute, uh, may require some affirmative action by the township, uh, so what this ordinance really does is two things. Number one, it codifies, uh, past practice by the township, uh, and number two, it, it clarifies, uh, that the township will avail itself of the, uh, higher bid threshold because it has a purchasing agent.
Gotcha. Uh, yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Iglesino.
Motion passes.
May I?
Mr. Cicero.
Sure. June 21st, 2011, ordinance number 2011, colon, oh, seven, be resolved that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the township of Parcipani Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements for the township of Parcipani Troy Hills, and appropriating $5,632,800, uh, $632,800 thereof, therefore, and providing for the issuance of $5,101,160 in general improvement bonds or notes of the township of Parcipani Troy Hills to finance the same, be read in title only on second reading and hearing held thereon.
And your second. Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Stanton. Roll call, please.
Councilman, um, at this time you would open the meeting to the public for any comments?
We need the roll call first.
Okay. Councilman Cicero.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Councilman Farrar.
Yes.
Councilman Stanton.
Yes.
I'll now open this portion of the meeting to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion.
May I?
Continue.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in newspaper according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second one, first, and, motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Stanton. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cicero.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Councilman Ferrera.
Yes.
Councilman Stanton.
Yes.
May I?
Mr. Stanton.
Ordinance number 2011, colon, oh, eight. Be resolved ordinance entitled, ordinance township Parcipani Troy Hills, county of Morris, New Jersey, providing various water utility improvements. Township Parcipani Troy Hills appropriating $595,000, therefore providing insurance of $565,250. General improvement bonds or notes township Parcipani Troy Hills to finance same be read in title only, second reading, hearing held thereon.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'll now open to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title, second reading, hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved said ordinance be passed final reading, notice filed passage, said ordinance be published in newspaper according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cicero.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Councilman Ferrera.
Yes.
Councilman Stanton.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ferrera.
Ordinance number 2011, colon, oh, nine. Be resolved that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the township of Parcipani Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for various sewer's utility improvements for the township of Parcipani Troy Hills, and appropriating $2 million, therefore, and providing for the insurance of $1,900 in the general improvement bonds or notes of the township of Parcipani Troy Hills to finance the same. Be read in title only in second reading and hearing held thereon.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrera, second by, um, Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'll open this portion of the meeting to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in the title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrera, second by Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
May I?
Mr. Cicero.
June 21st, 2011, ordinance number 2011, colon, ten, be resolved that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the township of Parcipani Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for golf course and recreation utility improvements for the township of Parcipani Troy Hills, and appropriating $202,667, $677, therefore, and providing for the issuance of $192,543 in general improvement bonds or notes of the township of Parcipani Troy Hills to finance the same, be read in title only on second reading, hearing held thereon.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'll now open this meeting to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion. Please continue.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in newspaper according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Stanton. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
May I?
Mr. Stanton.
Ordinance number 2011, colon, eleven, be resolved ordinance entitled, ordinance amended and supplementing, chapter 57, Personnel Policies, Article 3, Section 57-3, waiver health benefit coverage of the Code of Township Parcipani Troy Hills, be read in title only on second reading and hearing held thereon.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'll now open to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion. Please continue.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading, hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved said ordinance be passed final reading, notice final passage said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Ordinance number 2011, colon, twelve. Be resolved that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amended and supplementing, section 4-23, comma, Division of Recreation, of Article 8, Department of Parks and Forestry and Recreation of Chapter 4, Administration of Government of Code of the Township of Parcipani Troy Hills, be read in title only in second reading and hearing held thereon.
Is there a second? Motion by Mr. Ferrera, second by Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'll now open this portion of the meeting to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrera, second by Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cicero.
Thank you. June 21st, 2011, ordinance number, uh, 2011, colon, thirteen, be resolved that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending, section 285-4, Schedule A, No Parking Fire Zones of Article 1 of Chapter 285, parking of the Code of the Township of Parcipani Troy Hills to establish fire zones and regulate parking at And Can Brothers Plaza 53, 976, Tabor Road, Block 27, Lot 11.01, be read in title only on second reading and hearing held thereon.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'll now open this portion of the meeting to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion.
May I? Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'll now open this portion of the meeting to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed final reading, notice of final passage, said ordinance be published in newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'll now open this portion of the meeting to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion. Please continue.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading, hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved said ordinance be passed final reading, notice of final passage said ordinance be published in newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Okay. I'll now open the meeting to the public on any matter whatsoever. You have five minutes. State your name and address, sign in, please.
My name is Mary Przycki, and I've been a township resident, as most of you people probably know, since 1970. And I've seen many a change in Parcipani and in, and have been involved, hopefully, for the good, for the changes that were good for Parcipani. In the seventies and eighties, when most of you probably were in high school, except for Michael, because he stood next to us through a lot of these developments that came about in that time. One of them was the Prue Track, another one was the Dodge Track, the Bell Mee Track. When the developers first came here with those tracks, they proposed mixed land use development, okay? And you all know what that is, commercial, residential, business. The township people, especially the ones who lived in residential areas, didn't feel that that was in the best interest of the township. They came to meetings and they objected, and their objections were heard, because we liked the quietness of our residential neighborhoods, the fact that we knew business had to come in in order for ratables to come, so there were areas for both offices and commercials. Yet you could come back to your little enclave neighborhood of quiet residential. The master plan then was worked on and developed and looked and to the residents of Parcipani. There was input, and it was developed so that this continuation of residential business and commercial was separated, and mixed land use was not really introduced. And to me, it was for the good of this township and the good of my neighborhood. Now, all of a sudden, it comes in the guise of a new word called rehabilitation, I believe.
Rehabilitation.
Right. And it's spotty, it's not even in one area. It is, um, it's a concept that I don't think is appropriate for this town and the way we live, the way we enjoy it. There, there, there's a guise that says, oh, well, there's no place for people to move who want to move into different kind of housing instead of individual housing. I don't believe that's true. If you look, there's 23 rental garden apartment areas you can pick from. There are six condo co-ops that you can choose from. There are 10 condo houses that you can go into if you want to sell your house. All right, they say taxes are high and I can't afford my house, but when you move into a condo, you have taxes and you have condo fees, too. You cannot, to me, have a town that's at peace with itself by allowing a mixture of commercial and residential on one lot. I've seen it done, my daughter lives out in Utah, and I can tell you, in the town she lives in, they have mixed land use. And it's not quite so nice as you think it is, because two blocks down from her, there's an office building, there's a movie theater, there's this, there's act, there's, there's traffic that come in and out of their areas, they're trying to fight this. And we, for some reason, want it, or, not we, but you people here, you voted on a thing called rehabilitation. Is it a tool, or is it, or is it the law of, of, of the state of New Jersey saying you must do it? And is this tool in the best interest for Parcipani? There's this guise that says, oh, we need ratables. Well, yeah, but, and we need improvements for areas. Well, maybe it's the property maintenance codes that need to be enforced a little stronger. Maybe the office buildings that are empty, and we know the economy is bad, be, be, have people encourage them to come and look at what we have to offer in Parcipani. I think you need to step back and you need to really think, what in, in 25 years is this going to do to the township? Is this in the best interest of the future of this township, or is this a quick fix today? And whose interest is this in, the resident or the developer? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Pat Patacia, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Jamie Jasmine, um, about three meetings ago, you're going to look into, uh, the water rate with the schools for me? Something that concerned, uh, Dr. Sights at that time?
Yeah, you said about the meeting, they set up, we made a deal with them.
Something, yeah, something. Okay. Wellness coaches. I just happen to use the ladies room when I see the sign in there. Seems that all these things are during the day. Do the employees use their work time for this?
I didn't see the sign in the ladies rooms.
Yeah, well, it's all during the day and there's different hours. Do they go to these wellness coaches during their regular work hours? They don't go on their own time?
Nope.
Why?
That's the way we set it up, to encourage them to come.
Okay. And, um, I got a question on regarding the ordinance, you just read the 2011-11, where it actually states that you reduce the maximum amount of the waiver of the employees when they waived their health?
Yes.
That, um, that's because the state law changed, um, last year, I think, in 2010, a state law was passed that mandated that the maximum for anyone who accepted the waiver after May of 2010 could only receive a maximum of 25%.
So we were paying more than that?
Yes.
How much more than that? Have we?
We were paying 35%.
Okay. Um, 'cause I have a question about that, because, you know, they're waiving the health benefit, and that's great, but they only have to pay 1 point, something percent towards that health benefit right now. And to get 25%, they're getting, I don't know how to explain it to you. Do you see what I'm saying? They're getting more money not to take it, and they would actually have to pay, that they actually, you know, they're 1.5% out of their salary.
If they, if they waive it, they receive 25% or 35% of the premium.
Why would we do that?
Because the township gets the 75 or 65%. And they, they do not have to pay the 1.5% of salary if they're waiving.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is they only pay 1.5%, so why are we giving them 5%, uh, 25%?
Because we get to keep 65 to 75% of the premium. We say, we save 65 to 75% of the premium cost.
I'm not sure how that works, but I'll talk to you later.
Pat, that's the incentive to have them waive the insurance.
Oh, I understand what it's.
It's an incentive.
I, I know it's an incentive, but I'm saying the incentive is more than they actually pay anyway. They only paid 1%, why should we pay them 25% of a premium?
No, 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 you're missing the point. What, what do we, what's the total amount we pay for benefits?
If we pay, if we, if the cost of the premium is $10,000.
Right.
They will receive $25,000.
In other words, we pay, we pay $10,000 for those benefits.
We would have, we would have paid.
Right, and then we would, 7,500, we would maintain.
And now we save 7,500 by giving them 2,500.
Right. Instead of paying the whole premium, there is no premium, but we, that's the money we save.
Hey, Mr. Simpson.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. I remember a couple of years ago, when the mayor was installed, and he said, you know, why he wanted to be mayor, and that was to improve the quality of life for everyone, everyone in Precipiny. I remember that.
I do, too.
Yeah.
And we both have good memories.
And I know we provide a whole golf course for 113 Precipiny residents. Wonderful. Now I think it's time that we put some money aside to put a quiet zone for 750 people that live in the area that get impacted by this noise. It's not a lot of money, maybe $80,000, but these people who pay taxes, and I'd like to see, I notice, is this going to go on the agenda?
Well, I sent, they got a copy of the report, yes, I think it was two days ago, it was emailed to them. Am I right, Carol?
Yeah, we did receive a copy.
And they're going to review it, and then it's up to them to decide if they want to put it on the agenda, not myself.
Well, we don't have money in this year's budget to do this.
No, we don't.
So this would become a budget item to discuss for next year's budget.
The mayor reported that there's an extra $2 million that are in this budget that's...
That's the cap, that's the amount of, what, the cap we were under, 2 million, right? But we can't touch that.
That's not acceptable.
No.
Did anybody apply to New Jersey DOT for...
Well, we can do all that, but we still, I still, I think the council should look it over since they're going to vote to release funds, but like we said, it's not going to be in this year's budget. Even if we applied to the DOT, it probably wouldn't be till next year anyway, as well.
Well, we've got to get moving on it. Anybody apply to the county?
Well, I think that, I think that if it was, there was any funds out there, I think that Justin Lees would have applied for them already, knowing how urgent it is for you to have the quiet zone.
I think that would be nice, if we move a little faster on this. Has anybody at the council gone down to Powder Mill Road and listened to a few trains go by?
Many times.
Many times?
Many times. I'm over in the Mount Taber area quite often.
Well, no, I mean, do you go like to the Jamie Estates? Because these people are really impacted, and I think Coal Hill Road, there's a bunch of houses on there in the Powder Mill section. Those people are very well impacted. And I know the mayor was down there and he said, yo, those horns are really loud, you know.
Not loud, no doubt about it.
If you're in Mount Taber, you know, like...
Plus, I was under the horn, so.
Right.
I was right under it, so it was loud.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It wasn't at your house, though.
Not my house, yeah. If you go like in the center of Mount Taber someplace, the horns are not bad. But when you get closer to the tracks, like on the other side of Route 53, the horns, those people are really impacted by it. And I think the council ought to go down there and listen to a few trains, not, you know, three or four blocks away, but down by the Jamie Estates, maybe?
Heard them up close.
Or go right to the crossing and listen to them.
I've heard them up close. I've heard them up close.
Yeah? How close were you?
30 feet away.
Huh?
30 feet away, 40 feet away.
Well, then you know.
If you like, I can stand on the tracks.
I've been there with work multiple times, and I know right where you're talking about Jamie Estates, because I've been there, too.
And you listen to the trains go by? Okay.
I've heard them.
And I don't know, well, in the last few months, the horns have really gotten louder. I think New Jersey Transit has been adjusting their horns. And we get like 87 scheduled trains, day and night. Day and night, those trains go through, scheduled, and then there's a lot more trains that go through that are not scheduled. I think it's time for the people in the area to get some peace and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Mayor, would you check and see if there are funds available and applications? We can, we can get all those things in line and see what funds we can try to apply for.
Sure.
That certainly would help us make our decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there going to be a big discussion on this at the agenda meeting next week?
Not until we find out what funds we can apply for are available. Otherwise, it's going to wait until our budget process.
And the $2 million, that surplus that we have, that can't be used?
That's not acceptable.
That's not a surplus.
Yeah, that's just bank.
That's what the mayor said.
No, we came under $2 million.
Mr. Simpson, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off.
We haven't raised those, we didn't tax the people for those $2 million. We came in under the budget by $2 million.
Oh.
We didn't tax the people by that $2 million.
Okay. Oh, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Have a good night.
Jerry Manning, Rainbow Lakes. I think Mr. Simpson made some poor analogies this evening. First of all, I live in Rainbow Lakes. When I looked in Rainbow Lakes to see about buying a house, I drove over some railroad tracks, which immediately told me, trains go through here. But I bought the house anyway, and the trains go through, and hello, that's okay with me. If you buy a house by train tracks, do not expect not to see a train. Hello, pretty simple. To make an analogy about a golf course, which by the way, pays for itself with fees from residents and non-residents, the golf course at the end of the year is ahead of the game, so that's a very poor analogy. He also mentioned about 700-plus people who are affected by these train horns. Well, rather than ask me and the rest of the taxpayers in this town to pay for his quietness, there are two things that could be done. He could either move to a town that doesn't have a train, or have the 700 people who think this is bothering them come up with $1,000 apiece and pay for the quiet zone and leave the taxpayers out of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Analyst Katzenzero, 67 Midvale Avenue. A couple concerns, and that's really it, just concerns today. Oh, actually, one question for Jasmine, related to the DNH alternative risk. Is that a liability insurance that's replacing MC JIF, or is that another type of insurance? Because I saw healthcare insurance and then...
That's our workers' comp administrator.
So that's separate from the liability? That expires later this year, right?
We are self-insured on workers' comp, and we get the excess workers' comp through the JIF, actually through the mill.
So what is the...
And that does, that will expire at the end of this year.
So what is the DNH alternative, that's workers' comp that we're...
DNH is our administrator, is the administrator for our workers' comp policy.
Okay. Because it's not like we contract with someone, it's someone that works for the town? Is that how that works?
We contract with DNH.
Okay.
To provide the administrative services.
All right. Thank you. So a couple concerns. One is, and I asked Mr. Inghasino about this last time, about like why we're raising the limit and, on the bid threshold, rather. And it's because we have a purchasing agent, and you said that we've been operating under this same assumption that 36,000 is what it is. I didn't realize that, and I've sat through, you know, five years of council meetings, and there's certain things that, like, for example, this, you know, there's an ordinance here about from Alpha Dog Solutions for the website, and it mentions 17.5, which I think is kind of in accordance with the original threshold. So I'm concerned why we're doing it now, and also curious as to, I think this, this is kind of part and parcel to transparency, because this means that anything above, under 36,000 wouldn't be in public session. So has this, and Mr. Cazaro, you can answer, has this is something that's gone before the transparency committee for them to weigh in on before it's come before the council?
Ms. Cazaro, I've got news for you. As far as I'm concerned, since every penny has to be online, to me, it doesn't matter what the threshold's going to be, it's ultimately going to be online.
Okay.
So whether it's the threshold is a certain amount or another amount, as far as I'm concerned, the transparency committee is ultimately going to put everything online so everyone can see how every penny's spent. So I'm not, as you know very well, the creation of transparency committee had nothing to do with thresholds. Every penny, no matter what the threshold, is going to be online.
Okay.
So that's my position on transparency.
Another question I had is related to the presentation on the incinerator, which I thought was very well done, and I wanted to extend my kudos to the mayor, because I think it's really good that we're looking for alternative shoes of revenue. We didn't really get a chance to talk about it, and this was, the last meeting was the first time it really was presented to the public. I'm concerned that we're going to be voting on it very quickly, because we haven't really had a chance for the public to weigh in, and I'm thinking that there may be some concerns, both environmental and just health, if we're going to be like, you know, restarting the incinerator and allowing all that stuff to go in our atmosphere. I know you said it's going to be up to Department of Environmental Protection standards, but as far as I know, and, you know, you had mentioned in your presentation, the DEP is no longer issuing licenses for the incinerator, and I would question why they, they're doing that? That's something I think Mr. Wissakala had mentioned during his presentation, that we have an existing one, and because of that, it puts us in a unique position, you know, to have this contract agreement.
The EPA still has requirements for emissions into the air, and the scrubbers in that smokestack still are required to remove anything that's not allowed to go up into the air. Those requirements still exist.
So, so the reason I started looking into is actually from your question, Mr. DePiero, about the license, because I didn't realize that you needed to have a special license in order to operate an incinerator. So that was, like, my question's really like, why?
And as I understand it, they're not giving out any more of those licenses.
So why? But that's why I'm asking. Like, there must be some sort of reason why that they decided it's not a good idea, whether that's environmental or health concerns, and, you know, having, whatever it was, $60 million over 20 years is a lot of money, and that's important, but kind of to echo what Mrs. Przyziki said, if it's going to have some sort of negative impact, whether that's environmental or health on our community, then maybe we should just approach it a bit slower so that people can weigh in, especially those that are nearby. It's just...
I don't think there is an environmental issue. We...
Now, we had, we had the smokestack operating there for 25 years.
The reason why it's not operating in now, it's just not efficient.
Right.
To run it. It would be running, the fact of the matter, costs $3,000.
I think I explained that the last time.
$3,000.
We closed it down because it was too inefficient, we did not have enough garbage to burn.
It wasn't originally a pollution issue.
Right.
I understand. Okay.
And it costs the taxpayers nothing, and they're holding us harmless for anything.
There are still extensive permitting requirements.
Right.
And there are, the DEP and the EPA are imposing new regulations all the time on environmental issues.
I just, I think you understand like what my line of reasoning is as to like why there's been a suspension in giving out these licenses, and it's not something that we've addressed, and I'd, if, you know, Mr. Wissakala has an opportunity to respond to that at the next meeting.
No, no.
Suspension has nothing to do with Precipiny.
It's not a suspension. They restrict the number of licenses they give out.
The cessation of giving out permits?
Yeah.
Has nothing to do with us?
No. They decided how many they're going to give out nationwide. It's like the ABC. We can't create a liquor license, so there's just so many we're allowed to issue, we've issued the maximum amount, and we cannot issue anymore because there's a cap on it. Well, the EPA put a cap on these, these type of trash-burning incinerators, so it's not because of health reasons, it's because they capped how many could be, could have licenses, and they're not issuing any new licenses.
That like to offer a kind of a monopoly for the towns that do have them? Like, I just don't understand, the reason we have a liquor license, I would assume, is so that you don't have a liquor store on every corner, and people aren't, you know, it's probably a puritan background, but walking around drunk everywhere, like, that's why we have a limit on liquor licenses.
And they have a limit on this for a similar reason, not to have too many of them.
Yeah, because you don't want all of these incinerators emitting, you know, the same amount that our incinerator is emitting. You want to control the total number of emissions into the air in a certain location.
Okay. May I ask the chair for like 20 more seconds during public session?
Go ahead.
Okay. There's one other thing that we didn't have a chance to respond to, which is Mr. Stanton's statement at the end of the last open public session, and that was in regards to the solar panels comment, and he, you know, pointed out the Precipiny Life article, saying that I was wrong in what I had stated. So I went and I looked back at the figures that, you know, when I was at the council meeting when we discussed this, and Jasmine and the, I forget the man, Mr., I forget his name right now, but they did a really comprehensive financial analysis as to the potential financial benefits, aside from any environmental, positive environmental impact it would have. And I have a copy of it here. It ranges anywhere from $3.8 million to $5.7 million, and when they presented that, it was a conservative estimate that was based on the energy savings, that was based on the solar renewal energy credits or the Shreks. And I find it very upsetting the way that you approached that by doing it right at the end of public session where I couldn't respond, and frankly, just totally misconstruing the facts. This is on the public record, it's not something...
Okay, your 20 seconds.
Thank you.
We can discuss that on a sidebar, or we can discuss it over patch, which is probably where we're going to be talking about it anyway. Anyone else in the public? Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion. All right, we're up to a consent agenda. We are going to remove item number 24, limo license. Mr. Ferrara, would you offer that, please?
He's got to read it?
He's got to read the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
The resolution that you're adding is the one the council now has regarding Craftsman's Farms.
We're not up to a resolution yet, we're up to a consent agenda.
Okay.
Can I read it, or...
Please.
All items listed in the asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Township Council. It will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in a normal sequence on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
No.
Motion?
I was jockeying up.
Motion by Mr. Ferrara, second by Mr. Stanton. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cazaro.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Councilman Ferrara.
Yes.
Councilman Stanton.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Add-ons?
You make a motion to add two items on the agenda first. We need to roll through. Go to add them on to the agenda. So you're making the motion?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
You make the motion, is there a second to Mr. Cazaro's motion?
I make a motion.
Add two items to the agenda.
I have a quick question to ask regarding the Craftsman Farms. Open space. The open space, maybe someone can, Jasmine, maybe you can help me out here?
They're asking for $4,000.
Oh, it's...
It's not an additional $4,000. Two of the projects that were authorized came in under budget, and they would like to use that unused money.
$4,000.
It's $4,000 to replace rotten wooden gutters.
Okay. But they don't, they don't have $4,000 in their budget? Are they here?
No.
I think they should come here and find out why they made a mistake.
Now, this is, the gutters is a new problem that just emerged this spring, I think.
Okay, but they're asking money from us?
They're asking to basically transfer money that had been allocated to two other projects at Craftsman Farms to the gutters.
So this money is already their money, is that what you're saying? You're transferring?
It was allocated to...
It's not new money?
No.
And if we don't give that money, where's the money go?
It would come back into the trust fund.
What, do you want a presentation, Mr. Farrar?
We need, we need a motion to add two items to our agenda, we're still at that point.
What are we doing? Are we all set with the $4,000?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar? Mr. Stanton?
Well, I, it would have been nice if they were here, if they wanted the money. Obviously, they don't care if they're not here.
We all set?
Mr. Cazaro, you need to make a motion to add two items to the consent agenda.
I just did.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cazaro.
For both, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Councilman Ferrara.
Yes.
Councilman Stanton.
Yes. Jasmine, the $4,000's out of the open space fund?
Yes.
All right. Again, I always like to tell the residents that are in the audience, it comes out of the historical refurbishment portion of the open space fund, so it's not a tax increase. No. It's like, I'm sorry, Pat? Oh.
No, this is...
Oh, we're going to read them. Yeah.
Please.
Mayor? 2000, I'm sorry, June 21st, 2011, Resolution Township Council, Township Precipiny, Troy Hills, authorizing the expenditure of open space trust fund monies and amending the 2010 grant agreement with the Craftsman Farms Foundation, whereas ordinance number 2007: Whereas ordinance number 2007:12 authorizes the expenditure of open space trust fund monies for capital improvements to parks and for the preservation of historic properties. And whereas by resolution dated December 14th, 2010, the Township Council approved an allocation of open space trust funds for work on the calf barn in the amount of $12,000, and on the loghouse stairs in the amount of $65,000. $65,000 for loghouse stairs? Just had to ask. Whereas there is an immediate need to replace rotted wooden rain gutters at the loghouse at an estimated cost of $4,000. Now therefore be resolved by the Township Council, Township Parsippany, Troy Hills, that it hereby authorizes the expenditure of excess funds from the loghouse stairs in the amount of $1,000, and calf barn in the amount of $3,000, to be utilized for the replacement of the rotted wooden rain gutters at the Craftsman Farms loghouse. And be further resolved that the mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized to amend the 2010 grant agreement with the Craftsman Farms Foundation to include the aforementioned changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Catanzero.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Councilman Ferrara.
Yes.
Councilman Stanton.
Yes. Mr. Ferrara and I just discussed, this was the consent for all the resolutions? No, that was just...
No, that was the add-on.
May I read the next one?
Please.
Okay, let me see here. I move to appoint Carol Kehoe as interim municipal court clerk, I was in municipal court all day, sorry, municipal clerk for the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, effective June 1st, 2011.
Is there a second?
Exactly. Right.
Motion by Mrs. Catanzero, second by Mr. Stanton. Roll call, please.
Councilman Catanzero.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Councilman Ferrara.